Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, April 23rd. We are now moving into our special meeting, our Budget Study Session with City Council. On our agenda, we have the review of the proposed budget for fiscal years 2018, 19, and 2019, 20. It will be the review and final direction on budget.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, we are going to be reviewing for you where we are in terms of the proposed budget that we have discussed at greater length in the last two weeks with the council. And you were provided departmental presentations on the accomplishments of the last two years that the departments have achieved, and then their budget proposals for the next two-year period, as well as their goals and objectives. So tonight, we just want to review the most pertinent parts of the budget with you to remind you about some of the major concerns, and then also to, at this point in time, respond first to a couple of questions that were raised. You wanted additional information, and we have developed that information for you, so we can review that with you, and then to offer you an opportunity to provide whatever direction that you would like at this point in time about any aspect of the budget going forward. So with that, I'll have Ms. -- our Finance Director, Mr. Chu, go through and review the citywide expenditures and provide you with a budget summary.
This table summarizes the fiscal year 2019 proposed budget by department. The first column is the general fund proposed budget. Total general fund budget for fiscal year 2019 is at eighty-five point four million. The second column is the proposed budget for the other funds. This include internal service fund, gas, tax, enterprise funds project at eighty-four point four million. Since the budget was presented to the council on April the 12th, Economic and Development Department informed finance that the -- that only three point eight million is earmarked for the future affordable housing project instead of the original budget of five point nine million. So when you look at the other funds focusing on item number six, ECD, you see that change from the original seven point six million to the revised number of five point four million. This is the latest information that we received from ECD Department. So the very last column is the total proposed budget for the city at one hundred and sixty-nine point eight million for fiscal year 2019. So the next line is the fiscal year 2020 proposed budget. General fund budget increased by around four point five million to eighty-nine point nine million. The increase is mainly due to increase in cow purse and prior contribution, salary and benefit adjustment, and the increase in the pension obligation bond payment. Other funds decreased slightly by around one point six million to eighty-two point eight million. The total proposed budget for fiscal year 2020 is at one hundred and seventy-two million, the very last column. Now we focus on the key driver of the structural budget deficit. On the expenditure side, salary and benefit account for over seventy-five percent of the general fund budget, or sixty-five million of the total general fund budget of eighty-five million. And the project increase in workforce costs such as healthcare, overtime, and salary adjustments to maintain a competitive workforce will be a major challenge for the city to balance the budget moving forward. In addition, cow purse costs are projected to increase by around eighteen percent annually between fiscal year 2018 and 2020. So citywide, in 2018, the city paid thirteen point five million to cow purse, and it increased by two point four million, or eighteen percent, to fifteen point nine million in 2019, and another eighteen percent increase to eighteen point seven million. So you see eighteen percent, eighteen percent increase, but our general fund revenue only increased by an average of around three percent per year. So the next buildup is the pension obligation bond debt service payment, increased by around four percent annually, from three point eight million in the fiscal year 2019 to four point six million in fiscal year 2024. It is an escalating debt service payment, increased four percent annually. Assuming on a pay-as-you-go basis, the retired healthcare costs are projected to increase by around five percent annually, from three point four million in 2019 to four point seven million in fiscal year 2026. On the revenue side, the city does not have a diversified revenue base to support the city expenditure, and over sixty-five percent of the general fund revenue are from three major sources. They are property tax, sales tax, utility user tax. In order to balance the budget, the proposed budget include the use of three million of excess ERA revenue to reduce the general fund budget deficit. And it is very important to look at the excess ERA is a one-time revenue, and we should not be used to fund ongoing operating expense. And in summary, the project annual general fund revenue growth is around three percent per year. The three percent growth net behind the project expenditure increase such as cow purse and prior contribution rate increase, and the salary and benefit adjustment. Now we look at the general fund summary. This table summarizes the general fund revenue and expenditure projection for fiscal year 2019 and 2020. Project revenue for fiscal year 2019 is at eighty-one million, and the project expenditure is eighty-five point four million, resulting in a deficit of four point four million. And project deficit for the following fiscal year 2020 is five point seven million. In order to balance the proposed budget for the next two fiscal year, the city will have to dip into the general fund reserve for four point four million in fiscal year 2019 and five point seven million in fiscal year 2020. I would like to emphasize the proposed budget has already include one point five million reduction from the general fund department in each of the fiscal year. So that means in this proposed budget, all the general fund department has already reduced the budget by a total of three million. Now we look at the proposed general fund balancing strategies. This line summarizes the proposed budget reduction for fiscal year 2019 and 2020 with a total saving of around three million, at the bottom here. General government reduced the operating expenditure with a saving of $200,000 in the two years. ECD, Economic and Community Development, they eliminate one vacant senior building inspector position, and add two building inspector position with a general fund net impact of $200,000. Library and Recreation, eliminate one vacant recreation program supervisor, and one vacant library assistant position. They also increased fee and reduced program expenditure with a total saving of $400,000. Police Department, they freeze two vacant police officer position, and two vacant police sergeant position, and they also reduced operating expense and hourly staff with a total saving of two point four million over the next two years. Public Works reduced -- public work transferred zero point four three FTE from the general fund to other fund with a total saving of $200,000. So all in all, the two-year general fund department reduced the budget by a total of
It's worth noting that -- can you go back to the last slide? When the Finance Director talks about the reductions in positions that you can see here, and the equivalent savings, that savings is helping to reduce the budget gap. So it's not really savings. We're not putting it in a savings account. We're using it to lower that structural budget deficit, and we're applying the potential savings going forward to reducing what would be an otherwise larger gap than the one that we described for you earlier on in the previous screens. So, yes, it is savings because those positions are frozen or eliminated, but the savings are then reallocated in order to reduce the structural budget deficit.
Now we look at the general fund reserve. This table shows the project general fund and aside fund balance for the current fiscal year and the next two fiscal year. The city financial policy is to maintain an aside fund balance equal to fifteen percent of the annual budget expenditure. In fiscal year 2019, the aside fund balance decreased to eighteen point four million, or equal to twenty-one point five percent of the general fund reserve after using four point four million to balance the budget. In fiscal year 2020, the aside fund balance decreased to twelve point seven million, or equal to fourteen point one percent after using five point seven million to balance the budget. You can see the red number here is the use of the general fund reserve to balance the structural deficit, four point four million in 2019, and the use of five point seven million in 2020. So this is the very last line is the general fund reserve. Current year is projected at twenty-seven point nine. It will drop to twenty-one point five percent in fiscal year 19, and reduce further to around fourteen percent in 2020. Any question on the general fund reserve?
Do you want to raise that, the days of operating expenses? Do you have that there?
Yes, the next line is the day of the operating expense. Yeah. And here, the city general fund spend an average of around seven point three million per month to pay for employee salary and benefit and other operating expense. So in fiscal year 2019, the eighteen point four million is equal to two and a half months of operating expense, or eighty days of saving in the bank. In fiscal year -- this is 2020, not 2019. This is in fiscal year 2020. We have one point seven million of operating reserve, and that equal to around fifty days of reserve in the bank. So we can see it dropped significantly between the current year, around three months to two and a half months to one and a half months. Now we look at the proposed budget position change details. Now we look at the general fund position first. ECD eliminate one vacant senior building inspector, and add two building inspector. Finance requests to reclassify one PC land technician to a senior PC land technician. Library and Recreation eliminate one vacant recreation program supervisor, and one vacant library assistant position. And Public Works reallocate forty-three percent of the director of Public Work position to other funds. Police, they freeze two vacant police sergeant position, and two vacant police officer position. So all in all, general fund, there's a reduction of one point four three FTE in the next two budget. The first year saving is around one point two million. The second year reduction is a one point three million. So the two-year reduction is a two point five million, or one point four three FTE. This is the general fund. Now we look at the other funds, look at the Public Works Department. Okay, they reallocate forty-three percent of the director position to the other fund, this include engineering, motor vehicle, and building. And they eliminate one vacant traffic signal and street light technician, one vacant mechanic position, one vacant street maintenance worker position, and one vacant custodian position. So all in all, the net saving will be three point five seven FTE, or a total saving of around $800,000 for a two-year budget. Now we look at the water and wastewater. On the water side, the department proposed to eliminate one vacant distribution system maintenance worker, and add one distribute system manager. On the wastewater side, three position will be eliminate. This include the correction and distribution system manager, and correction system field supervisor, and the vacant warehouse truck. They also propose to add five position. This include the correction system manager. I want to emphasize that is the correction system manager is a -- currently, the employee is in the custom -- is in the correction system field supervisor. They want to reclassify that position to become a system manager. So that's why you can see one elimination and one addition, just like a wash with no impact to the FTE. And they also add one safety training compliance officer, one plants and equipment maintenance electrician, one lab technician, and one office assistant. So the net impact to the water and wastewater fund is the addition of two position, or around $330,000 impact to the budget on the first year, and $350,000 net impact to the second year of the budget. So when you add the two, it's around $600,000 impact to the budget. Question on the water and wastewater budget?
There were no changes from last time there was a presentation, right? These are all?
The -- it's pretty much is the same, no changes, except I provide the council with a very detailed breakdown by department. So instead of looking at those like small organization chart, you have like a one page that summarizes the entire changes. So I will turn over to the city manager for the final direction on the budget.
So, one of the things that the council discussed at some length on our -- on the first evening of the budget review meetings was about your priorities. And I won't go through all of these. You have them in front of you, but these are the -- as they were presented to you originally. But can you go to slide 24, please? So it was during the discussion, Councilmember Sylvester raised the issue of moving some of the priorities around. And so on the left column of this slide, you see the way the council priorities are listed. They're not necessarily listed in relative importance, although one could argue that economic development and revenue generation and public safety have always been top priorities. But all of the priorities listed there have been priorities that the council has said are of equal importance over time. However, on the right-hand side, you have the proposed council priorities based on the input that we got from Councilmember Sylvester, that he believed that community and civic support should rise to the top, followed by government operations. And so we have presented this to you just for the sake of discussion. And if the council wants to revise it in any other way, we're here to take that input from you. If you want to add or detract to your list of priorities, we're prepared to make those changes as well. So this is your opportunity, starting with the priorities, to make whatever changes that you would like.
At this point, I'm asking my colleagues if they have any comments. At the last meeting, I did mention if, you know, to keep in mind that we would be discussing this this evening.
Vice Mayor. I know at the budget sessions, you had mentioned the issue of affordable housing. Is your thought -- I'm asking the city manager, is it the land use component where affordable housing is going to be as a priority, or is that under?
Well, it's listed in the council priorities under the council's departments, but if you want to specifically call it out in this list, then we can either make it a standalone priority, or you can include it in land use, because obviously, when there's opportunities for development, we can include it. But what I heard from the council is that it is a standalone priority, and if you want to just add that to the list, that certainly--
I'll give it to the mayor, because she mentioned it, and I thought it was a good idea at the time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think, given the state of what we've heard from both our residents and workers around the need for affordability, I think we would put it in.
So is it affordable housing specifically, or housing?
I think--
Or housing, and then some subset of affordable housing, transit-oriented housing, you know? I'm just trying to get a sense of how you would like to include that priority.
I think putting in affordable housing. I think land use in itself would have other market rate units in there because of how development usually works, but I think we need to identify affordable housing as separate.
Yeah.
Thanks. Thank you.
And where would you place that?
Well, yeah, what priority would you want to place that? And, well, first of all, let me ask you this. We've numbered these. These are not necessarily the relative importance of them. We've just numbered them for the sake of a list. But if you want us to rearrange the numbering so that what you're -- what we're showing on the right-hand column now, eight would become one, seven would become two, we can certainly do that. Or we can just say they're all equally important, and it's a list of what the priorities are and everything that we do, because the council priorities drive the programs and services in every single department. So when you heard the departmental presentations, their activities are tied to these various priorities.
When we started the budget process, I asked you, and the indication around this, whether or not the numbers on the current council priorities basically were stating, you know, that they were numbered in priority. I think when you mentioned it, that it was numbered in priority. And now you're stating that it could be numbered or just stated in general and have equal priority.
Right. You can have it in equal priority. The council historically has said that this reflected the priorities that they felt in relative order of their importance.
Okay.
But it's not hard fast. I mean, you can change it whatever way you want. If you want to raise something up to a higher priority, as was suggested by Councilmember Sylvester, then you can certainly do that. And if you want to specifically say the first one listed is the most important, then we can say they are listed by level of importance.
I would like to suggest that we look at the one on the left, remove the numbers, and that sort of solves the problem. It says, "These are all important," but it doesn't place necessarily one above the other. Because I can just see us -- I mean, if each one of us has, you know, what our most important thing is, we could be here for three hours arguing, "Oh, it's a six and a half." It's a, you know, we could just take the numbers off.
Yeah. I think, yeah, I think I agree with that, because I think if you -- if a person looks at that, and they're going to think that maybe we don't consider public safety as important, when I definitely think it should be at the top, but equally so, I think a lot of those others are just as important. And I don't want to give the impression we think public safety is much lower on the scale.
So I think, you know, just for purposes of explanation, in the past, when the council has looked at this, the very first listed priority of economic development, the reason why that is there is because it was felt that that drives everything else, because if we don't have money, then we can't provide for public safety, or transportation, or infrastructure, or any of the other things. So the very first one has been expressed as of ultimate importance to ensure that all of the priorities on the list could be met, you know? And so it doesn't mean that public safety is not important. It just means if we don't have the money, we can't fund public safety adequately, or any of the other items on the list.
Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, you know, I was the one who had asked to change things around. I like the idea of removing all the numbers. My main reason for moving community and civic support was, as I was looking at the org chart, basically, we on council act on behalf of the people. And subsequently, I think our constituents and the people come first. That's why I had asked, well, I'm more than happy to remove the numbers, coming from what I used to do before. I'd love to put public safety number one, but I think they are all equally important, but we should not forget that we answer to the people, and that's why--
So I certainly appreciate that, and that's the reason why on the overall city organization chart, the people of Daly City are at the top. The community and civic support council member really relates to the programs that we are providing. It's not the residents of the community themselves, but the kinds of programs that we are providing specifically for the community, like the newsletter, like--
Doja Lunch.
You know, all the different kinds of outreach activities that we provide through my office, as well as the other city departments. It's really around programmatic issues.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Sylvester. I think moving forward, it seems like taking off the numerical numbers on here would seem best, and if there's any other priorities that would want to be added, and for certain, we should put affordable housing, as mentioned earlier, but if there's no other areas to be added, I think that's kind of the best way forward.
So I would just raise one more thing. Lawrence, can you go back to slide 21, please? So maybe it would be helpful as well for you, now that you have identified all the various priorities, to just take a look. You have the handout in front of you. If there's any specific things that you want to call out in addition to, or in replacement of, the items, the sub-points here in blue, relative to those priorities. If there are statements that the council wants to make about those priorities, then this would be an opportunity for you to provide us with that input.
Well, I think for number one, with economic development and revenue enhancement, I think it's important. I know we say ident-- it's important, I know we say identify revenue-generating opportunities to expand economic base. I think, instead of just identifying, I think we need to be more affirmative, and so create the economic development plan to generate opportunities to expand economic base. Because identifying, I feel like we can take a more proactive approach, or even state it.
What's that?
Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I remember you had mentioned during the budget sessions that you wanted some kind of a plan, a finance plan, or something, what was that? Remember that discussion?
So it was the, I think I mentioned, like, the economic development
Is that the same?
Yeah. Just to make sure that, you know, moving forward
So we had talked about adding a position for an economic development specialist or coordinator. And so, as part of that discussion, I suggested to you that probably the first step would be to work on developing an economic development strategy, so that if we hired a position, they would know what their, what their purpose was. They'd have, you know, a focal point for the work that we believe that is important for someone in that kind of a position to be focused on. So I really do think we haven't had a formal economic development strategy created in recent years that takes a look at the entire city and identifies the opportunities that are available, and how the city should focus its efforts in trying to encourage economic development in particular areas that Daly City is, you know, positioned to help to grow and develop. So I think that's what we were talking about. And we can certainly add, you know, pursuing an economic development strategy, hiring a consultant, working with the economic and community development director to develop that strategy, and then identify what, what a potential new position could do to help implement that strategy.
So would you be putting here as another bullet point under number one there, to develop a citywide economic strategy?
So that was what I was mentioning earlier.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's in line with that.
So we also talked about the issue of Engine 95, and the campaign that we might engage in, in putting something on the ballot.
Yeah, that's not specific.
Is that something we should state as a priority? Because my fear is that we don't, if we don't have something in writing, in print, that, I want to keep that on the forefront, and I'm sure it's covered by public safety, the blurb that's on there. I'm just wondering if we need
So can you, are, are you looking at implementing that in the first year, or the second year of the next two-year budget? I think if you focus on the second year, you're going to have more time to develop the campaign and the plan and all that, because we were kind of at this position the last time, and we really just didn't have enough time to put out an adequate campaign. So are, so are you wanting to look at that for the second year of the, of the two-year budget?
Well, I want to start on it. I think we talked about, we need
The work, the work has to be laid out. But in terms of, of laying the foundation to go to the people in November of 2019?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And if it was in 2019, that would be a mail, a postcard ballot, correct? Since it's not a normal election year?
Would that be on the June, a June, or November?
She just said November.
November. Okay.
But we only have elections in even years.
Twenty, yeah, so then it would have to be 2020.
Twenty twenty.
Yeah.
And 2020 is a big election. So you have, there's a strategy there that, so maybe exactly when, we might want to leave a little open-ended.
Yeah.
That we're going to begin the process.
Well, there's, and I, I think the Vice Mayor did say, working on it, you know, or putting the effort now. It's really, I mean, the strategy around that is, I think, really ensuring that there's adequate education out there. And so whether it's the presidential election time, or if it's a special one, I think it's what he mentioned, like, how do we put this and have it as a priority, so that therefore, it's not too late in the future, so. Okay. All right. So, okay, Councilmember Sylvester.
Madam Mayor, I have some questions on the presentation, not specific to these bullet points. I think we're still on the topic of bullet points, modification and changes, but I have questions on the presentation.
So are there any more comments on the bullet points before we move forward into the presentation?
Well, let's, let's move to the next page.
Okay.
Go to the next page, please. Okay, hearing none, and this is the last page. I think you changed.
So if there's no other comments on the city council priorities, Councilmember Sylvester, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Page, page 10, which is, I guess, is slide number 10. Did I have that right?
Correct.
Yes, yes. I believe we had asked for additional information, I say, for the past eight years of the budget, what was proposed and versus actual.
Oh, I thought you were going to have copies.
And I want to know how close we were to, I would, I would hope that that would be coming.
Can you put it up? You have, you have the, Lawrence sent me this information. I thought he was just sending it to me, and he thought I was going to make copies of it. So we'll put it up for you. You had asked for a summary of
Over the years.
From 2009, the general fund historical expenditure.
Expenditure
From fiscal year 2009 to 2017. And we did actually have this, but I thought it was just for me.
Yeah. So it was actually the projections and the actuals, right?
To see how close we are to
Right, right.
How off we are, and you'll always be off a little.
I mean
On the share chart, I can like an email that you write after this council meeting.
Okay.
So you asked question about the North County Fire Authority, what is the Daly City, the different types of call. So we have that information ready.
All right.
And also the, the detailed general fund historical expenditure and revenue, we have like a very detailed analysis
Okay.
For you, for the fiscal year 2009 through 2017.
Great, great.
So we have that available for you. It's making copy right now.
All right. Thank you so much.
We're going to get you copies of that right now. I'm sorry about that.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, page 12, I mean, slide number 12. Now, I haven't been here that long, and it's actually my first budget presentation. And since the recession, I know many departments have asked to cut back, to eliminate positions. Now, in going through the information, I see vacant positions. So obviously, when we say freeze vacant positions, what caused these positions to become vacant? Did somebody retire, and then we said, "Well, let's see how we do without that position. It's a vacant position." Then we just get rid of the position. How does that work?
So in the last two-year budget, we did eliminate six police officer positions. This time around, because of the need to reduce our expenditures to the level that we have discussed since we started, it required us to look at the police department, which is the largest budget in the city, to help to reduce the structural budget deficit. And so as a result of that, there are two, there were vacant positions that we then said we are not going to fill, in order to achieve the reduction in expenditures that we needed. So we weren't going to lay off anyone, we weren't going to take someone out of a position, but because we didn't have those positions, we have frozen them, in the hope that somewhere down the line, that we will have sufficient revenue, and there will be an opportunity to fill those positions. Because after having eliminated six positions in the last two-year budget, eliminating two more positions permanently would have a significant impact on the police department. And although we can't afford to fund those right now, my feeling was that the likelihood was that the council would want to at least reserve the opportunity down the line, that if the revenue situation improves, that we would be able to refill those positions.
I would like to add that the major difference between to freeze a position, and the elimination to freeze is, we hold the budget FTE, so that means the FTE is still in the budget, but we don't provide funding for these two positions. So that means, in the future, if we have more resources for the city, then department can fill those positions. For those elimination is, we remove the FTE from the budget. So that means, in the future, if department wants to refuel the position again, they need to come to the council and get the council approval to increase the budget FTE. So those are the major difference between freeze and eliminate position.
Thank you. That's half the answer. What determines a vacant position? How did those positions become vacant? Because I see here on slide number 17, you're eliminating one, two, three, three vacant positions. How did they become vacant, or?
You also like, it depends on like a different situation, there may be times the employee retired, so that wise, you create like a vacant position, there may be times that the employee found other jobs and left the city
We just don't refill them.
We don't refill that, so that's why we have like a vacant position.
So if these positions were in the budget, it would create some sort of salary savings, but only to apply those savings to reducing the deficit in the budget.
Correct.
It's not like an account that we have
No.
And the money's just sitting there. It's to reduce.
It just means, absolutely. It just means that the budget deficit
Right.
Beget, go, becomes a little lower than it would be if we kept that position.
All right. But at the same time, I, you know, I just hate to see if somebody retires, and we just don't fill the position, when we originally had the budget for it, and I think the position
Well, you know, the, as we've explained through this, the budget discussions, Councilmember, 80% of the budget is personnel. So when we're trying to reduce the budget deficit, the way that we can do that, where it is going to have the impact that we need of actually reducing the numbers that we need, we have to rely on positions, because we can't reduce the budget, the structural budget deficit on office supplies. We can't reduce the budget deficit on vehicles. It has to be personnel, because that is the largest cost center in the budget.
Got it. Thank you. I had three questions. It's all, all been answered now. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor.
And we're providing you now with the follow-up information you had asked for regarding the North County Fire Authority, the breakdown of the major incidents just for Daly City, so we provided that for you. And then the chart that Councilmember Sylvester had asked for, the historic expenditure history for the general fund from 2009 to 2017.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from the council? Okay, seeing none. I think that's
Oh, yeah. So hearing no other direction, then we will begin the process of finalizing the budget for you, based on what was presented, and the changes that you've just requested. We'll, we'll make all those changes in the final draft budget that we will bring back to you.
We're planning to bring the budget back to the council for the approval, the first council meeting in May. So you see a draft of the proposed budget?
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Do I have a
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mr. Lawrence and Ms. Martel?
Yes.
Exactly what I was looking for. So I just want to say thank you for putting it together.
You're very welcome.
I will review.
Yeah, I'm just giving a quick look over that, and it looks like, other than for special circumstances, we've been pretty close.
Except 2016, which
Yeah, that was pretty far.
Well, yeah, that's due to salary adjustments and the increase in CalPERS. I mean, that's a special situation. And then, of course, in 2012 was the redevelopment thing. But other, all the other years, it's been a little bit overspent, a little bit underspent.
Well, maybe at the future meeting, given that we, we are the only ones that are able to see this document, possibly just presenting it, so that we're the only ones on the dais that could see this, that we could present it, and so that also people in the audience and watching can also understand.
When, when we come back for the, your consideration of the proposed budget, we will incorporate this and show you, based on what's happened in the past, what we would expect to happen in the future. In addition, we are planning to schedule a review of the city's financial sustainability plan.
Long-term financial plan in the first council meeting in May.
So along with the budget, we will be looking at the long-term financial plan, so that you can see the progress that we're making towards addressing the issues that were first identified when we presented that long-term plan to you a few years ago.
Ms. Martel, on the North County Fire handout?
Yes.
I see a date range from January to the end of December, but it doesn't indicate by city of the JPA.
So this was pulled out. If you look at the top, under North County Fire, it says Daly City. So these are the Daly City numbers.
Okay. I had asked to, if we can compare it with the areas that is served by North County Fire, because it's my understanding that Daly City pays the bulk of the salaries for these fire officials. So for instance, I see 139 fires for this timeframe, and I assume that those were all in Daly City.
These were all in Daly City. These stats are specifically for Daly City. That was my understanding of what you were asking for.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that Daly City wasn't overpaying for the services since the, under the JPA, we serve
So, Councilmember, under the JPA, we pay our salaries to our firefighters. Pacifica pays the salaries for their firefighters, and Brisbane pays the salaries for their firefighters. Both of those other jurisdictions pay towards the administrative overhead that is required for us to provide the chief and all the administration and training for the authority. But each respective city determines the compensation level and benefits for their firefighters, and they are responsible for paying that for their respective firefighters.
Our, our fire chief, does he have jurisdiction over all four?
He does. And so each of the cities contribute a share of his salary. That's the overhead. That's the overhead that the cities are paying for. Him, the deputy chief
Yes.
The fire marshal, the training division, all of the things that they benefit from, that Daly City manages for them, they pay an administrative fee for that. So they're covering So they're covering their proportional share of that cost, including the fire chief and those staff.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Martel.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Sylvester. At this point, do I have a motion to adjourn?
You have to adjourn.
All right. Thank you very much.